Well, um, you ready? Okay, with the, uh, with the council, please come order. Uh, we do have some presentations we're gonna start before we do the Pioneer Women. I'm gonna call them, Ms. Galanter.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's my, uh, very great honor today to present four members of the Los Angeles Police Department who, like so many members of the Los Angeles Police Department, really go out of their way to protect and to serve. And I've asked them to come in this morning so we could commend them for a pretty remarkable, and I hope you guys don't have to do it too often, um, episode in their recent service to the citizens of Los Angeles. The officers are Darius Lee, Randy Goddard, Vicky McGee, and Narciso Ortiz. And I want to tell you a little bit before I give them these, I want to tell you a little bit about what they did. Um, we're also joined by Captain Gary Williams of Pacific Division where these fine officers work. On March 16th, they were conduct-- the officers were out doing their thing and they were conducting a traffic stop when they heard a woman screaming for help. She was leaning over the second-story apartment balcony and there was smoke and flames pouring out of the window behind her. She was getting ready to jump and the officers managed to get there fast enough to calm her down, enough to tell her not to jump, and then all four of them got fire extinguishers out of their cars and rushed into the burning apartment building. McGee and Ortiz went through the building evacuating the residents. Lee and Goddard went directly to the apartment that was on fire and when they arrived, of course, they-- the front door was covered with fire. So they kicked in the door, they got out their fire extinguishers, they went through the living room that was completely in flames, they got through, despite all the thick smoke and that smoke is really bad for you, and the intense heat, the officers, without stopping to think about their own safety, fought their way straight through with the handheld extinguishers and they were able to keep everything under control till the fire department got there and the victim was able to be evacuated. So the victim was okay, the-- all the other people in the building were okay, and even the officers were okay. And the fire department, who were just slightly miffed that the police beat them to the scene, but these guys worked together, um, reported to us and to Captain Williams and the officers on the scene that if it hadn't been for their quick, brave response, um, the apartment would have been completely engulfed in flames and the resident probably would have been killed. Officers Lee and Goddard were-- put their lives, their own lives, in serious jeopardy when they went into the apartment just with these handheld fire extinguishers. And the rest of the residents, of course, were saved by the fact that officers Ortiz and McGee went through getting everybody out. And so it is my very great privilege to recognize these fine officers for their work. As you know, the LAPD is taking a lot of heat these days and I think it's important to recognize that our officers perform acts of heroism every day and we don't always find out about it here at the council, we don't always know exactly who it was who did it on a particular day, but I am really proud of you guys and ladies, and I know you're here somewhere. Um, and so I-- it is with, um, a great deal of pride and pleasure that I present certificates of commendation to, to Officer Darius Lee. Randy Goddard.
Thank you very much.
Vicky McGee. Narciso Ortiz. His name is spelled wrong, but we're gonna fix it. And before I let them say anything, I think Captain Williams wants to say something.
Thank you, Ruth. Uh, thank you so much for honoring our officers. As you say, uh, these days are not, uh, are not real bright for us, but, uh, I hope everybody understands that, uh, there's thousands of officers out there every day risking their lives every day for the ci-- citizens of, uh, Los Angeles. And, uh, just to let you know, for the most part, many times we do get to the scene before the fire department and we do rescue many people every year. In fact, about a week after this incident, in fact, I think it was just a few days ago, Randy Goddard was at the scene of another fire and he and his partner went in and put the-- and helped put the fire out, so.
Well, now he has lots of experience.
Yeah. Thank you.
I just want to say again, as somebody who's been rescued by both the police department and the fire department, it really is nice to be able to say thank you to the next generation. Thanks a lot, guys. Anybody want to say anything? Sit tight, we're gonna-- if you step over there, we're gonna do a picture in the back as soon as I do this other one. Now, we have a couple of other things to celebrate as well. Stacy Jones, where are you? Stacy Jones? You're hiding in the back. Stacy is our new Port Chief Harbor Engineer, the first woman to hold the post, I believe, and About Time, too. She, she, uh, has just recently been appointed as the Chief Harbor Engineer and what that means is that she oversees 199 professional, technical, and clerical employees of the port's engineering division in the planning, design, and project management of marine terminals. And this is a 7,500-acre port. This is a big place and there's a lot of stuff going on there all the time and it is, um, gonna be a big job. Stacy's been with the city for 19 years. Um, she started as a student engineer in 1981 and, uh, has been climbing the ladder ever since. She's been a construction contracts manager for the port, she managed a capital budget of $700 million and she's been working very hard on the almost completed Pier 400 project. In 1998, she was named Woman of the Year by the LA Chapter of the Women's Transportation Seminar. The year before that, she was inducted into the College of Fellows by the Institute for Advancement of Engineers. Bachelor's Degree in Civil Engineering from LMU in CD6 and lives in San Pedro with her husband and five children, two of whom are here. And, uh, it is-- she-- we also, of course, we allowed Larry Keller, who really is her boss, to come as well. Um, and so Stacy, I'm gonna give you this with a great deal of pride, but I think I'm gonna let Larry talk. No, I'll give you this first. Larry can talk later. Put that down, you don't need that. Congratulations.
Thank you, Ruth.
Now, stand by, Larry's gonna talk next. Do you want to say anything? And then, are you gonna introduce your family? Do that when we're done. Here, go ahead, do your thing.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I, I-- this is a really proud day for us at the port, for Stacy and the family. This is, this is one of the times when you really feel good about things happening. As, as the councilwoman said, Stacy came to us first as a student engineer. She's worked hard, she's worked well. It shows that, that merit and a, and a really good city system and opportunity come together every, every once in a while to get things right and we think this is something we could really do well in the city. I'd like to congratulate Stacy and thank you, Councilwoman.
Okay, Stacy, you're on.
I'd like to first thank Councilwoman Ruth Galanter for this acknowledgement and also to the city for its recent appointments in these key, uh, these key areas at the World Airports and also at Los Angeles Department of Transportation. It shows that the city has the foresight and the encouragement and support of women to do these types of, um, jobs. I would also like to thank Larry Keller for his support and encouragement also, it has meant a lot to me, and also to my family. Uh, with me today is my husband, John Foxworthy, my daughter Natalie Foxworthy, and Matthew Foxworthy. Thank you very much.
I thank Councilwoman Savornich, who actually represents the Port District and is also on that resolution, wanted to say something. I didn't know you were here, Ruthie, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam President Pro Tem. Uh, I would just like to stand and congratulate Stacy for this wonderful accomplishment in her career. Uh, her family is very well represented in the, in the city family and this just adds frosting to the cake, this appointment. Uh, I cannot think of anyone more deserving than, than this appointment and I'd like to offer my congratulations, it's terrific.
Thank you very much, Councilwomen Savornich.
Okay, step aside, we're gonna do-- don't leave yet, we're gonna do a picture, too. Okay, one more.
Ruth, let us call the roll first. We do have a quorum. Call the roll.
Bernstein, Chek, Fury, Galanter, Gober, Hernandez, Holden, Miskowski, Pacheco, Vidia, Ridley, Thomas, Savornich, Wax, Walters, Ferraro, ten members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Uh, this is a meeting of the City Council for the City of Los Angeles on the 31st day of March the year 2000. There are 15 council districts in the city. The regular meeting days are Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. We are currently being viewed by cable subscribers throughout the Los Angeles area on Channel 35 and we're also being monitored by council phone. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Galanter moves, Mr. Holden second. If there's no objections, unanimous vote. The next item?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
If there's no objections, unanimous vote. I just want to point out that we do have some presentations before we will do the Pioneer Women, so, uh, Ruth, proceed.
Thank you. Um, Pat, where are you? There you are. Now, everybody here knows Pat Sanders, but... So clearly she doesn't need any introduction. However, what may surprise you is that Pat has actually retired. Some-- yeah, look, see that smile? I knew it. Um, Pat Sanders, um, retired from DWP on March 1st after a 29-year career with the city of LA. And, uh, she, it's been quite a full career. She's been a very vocal member of the Engineers and Architects Association. She's appeared before council, as you all know, on a number of occasions and before the committee, Commerce Committee, on an equal number of occasions. She started in 1971 as a key punch operator in the Data Service Bureau. And after several promotions, in 1984, she, uh, became a data processing technician. Then she got some more promotions and she wound up her career as a systems specialist and systems analyst for Management Information Services, Purchasing, and Information Technology Services. She was elected to the EIA Administrative Council early in her 29-year career and has been a very active member as, again, as you all know, and, um, has served the union in a number of capacities. Uh, in 1990, she was the first female African-American Vice President of EIA and led the organization for three years. During that time, she recruited more members, rallied the troops, um, came in and upheld the union's positions forcefully.
Yes.
Well, you have to agree, yes, forcefully. In addition to her work with EIA, Pat has been a committed member of the Department of Water and Power African-American Association, the Vietnam Veterans Association, Los Angeles Asian American Association, and the Latin American Employees Association. And on top of that, she also serves as an election poll worker and has done that for over 20 years. So, uh, now that you've finally decided to relax a little bit, we thought we would give you a resolution from the City of Los Angeles, signed by all of us, including the mayor, and basically this recites your 29-year career and wishes you a wonderful, happy, healthy, fun retirement.
Thank you.
We're gonna do this. You don't have to do it. Good morning. First of all, I want to say thank you, you're really humbly, and I want to say thank you to Councilwoman Galanter and thank you to all of you members of the council. Uh, as Ruth has stated, there are some times when I come in and I have to, you know, kind of argue with you or disagree with your points of view, but I have to say that I do admire you for the service that you have given for the citizens of Los Angeles. And I do have to say to the citizens that you need to be more involved with your communities. These people here have to make some tremendous decisions regarding the city and regarding your, your life and you need to join with them to help our city become better. And I, I am very humble and I very admire them so much for willing to do that. And now I'm gonna introduce my family and this is really an important day for me because my father stands here with me and I'm gonna get a little choked up here because he's lived to see this day. He retired from the Department of Water and Power, being a city employee also, 20 years ago, and for him to be here now, uh, it really does best my dad. Also, my stepmother also retired from the Department of Water and Power after an extended amount of, of service and I have to give thanks to her also. And finally, and not lastly, but leastly, my husband is here with me and we have been married for 31 years and I couldn't have accomplished any of this without him. William Sanders. My son is here also with me, Michael Sanders. My daughter is not able to make it and we forgot to bring a picture so we could hold up with her. She's in Northridge and she has to take an exam, but finally Michael, because Michael was here also with me. Also, my great aunt is here and she is 91 years old and I have to say, don't she look good? Also, my other aunt is here, Yula Hodge, and I am, I mean, she watched me grow up and she-- I won't say she put diapers on me or anything like that, but she watched me when I was a little girl and to see her with me now, I'm really honored on that. Finally, I don't have any brothers and sisters, but I have so many friends and so many people who have been through me with this trip. These are only a few of the people. Kathy Burleson, who I've been with forever and a day, I mean, we have raised children together, everything. She's just like a sister to me and she's still an employee of ITA. Also, last but not leastly, my other sister Betty Porter, who's a retiree like me. Ow! I don't know what else to say, but thanks to the hundreds of people, I'm happy and, uh, you won't just see me like I'm retiring and I'm just going away. I still am going to be involved, we have other issues that are like, uh, the, the airports and other issues, what kind of happens here with the city kind of affects us too in other areas. So I will be here, I will be back, it's just a great day to be able to accept this and I thank you so much. Your most welcome. Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Galanter. Mr. Ridley Thomas? No, he wasn't there. Not the Pioneer Woman, Mark. Mark, not the Pioneer Woman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. President, members of the council, I'd like you to join me this morning in acknowledging Ceeley S. Stanford, a very valued employee of the Community Redevelopment Agency for the past 29 years. Ceeley, why don't you come forward? Give her a hand, please. Ms. Stanford began her career with the agency in 1970 when she faced the challenge of single-handedly relocating all of the residents and businesses in the Monterey Hills projects. Since that time, she has worked tirelessly and diligently on redevelopment projects in every part of this city, demonstrating through her outstanding service and effective manner how redevelopment contributes to the preservation and revitalization of our communities. There are a few projects that Ms. Stanford hasn't worked on. She has worked on acquiring properties for such CRA projects as the Convention Center expansion, the Produce Market, Pico Union 1 and 2, Warner Grand Theater, the Baldwin Hills Crenshaw Plaza, um, and, uh, the Central Library, and most recently, the Staples Center. She has earned wide respect from her peers and associates, receiving the 1998, in 1998, the Martin Luther King, uh, Junior Award from the Community Redevelopment Agency Employees Association. Please join me, members of the council, in recognizing Ms. Stanford's outstanding contribution in service to the City of Los Angeles and congratulating her on the occasion of her retirement. Ceeley? Now be it resolved that by the adoption of this resolution, the Los Angeles City Council hereby commends Ceeley S. Stanford for her 29 years of dedicated service to the Community Redevelopment Agency and the City of Los Angeles and for her critical role in the development of the city. We extend to you best wishes for a very, very happy and well-earned retirement.
Thank you to my dear councilperson, Mark Ridley Thomas. I'm very grateful for this award and the recognition of the services, uh, performed throughout the last 29 years with the Redevelopment Agency. And my thanks to God, who's the head of my life, for imparting in me the knowledge and the wisdom to endure and to carry out the activities of the Redevelopment Agency for the past 29 years. And my thanks also to my family and my friends and especially my two young ladies. Uh, throughout this, uh, career, I raised two daughters. One was only four months old when I came to the agency. She is now, and she could not be here today because she is at Warner Brothers where she's a graphic artist doing major work for that studio. My other daughter, however, is with me today, Kelly Camille Stanford, who is a licensed attorney practicing here in the City of Los Angeles. And my thanks to my God for that effort on his behalf. Also, without my coworkers and without my family and my dear sister, I have one sister. It's the two of us, it's the combo. Ruth Williams, who is at my side at all times and we are like one, 'cause it's just the two of us. And then there are my coworkers. Without them, I don't know how I could have carried out the responsibility and, and as you see the skyline of the City of Los Angeles and at the bottom of each of those buildings lies the work of Ceeley and her staff assembling the land and making it possible to develop the, the projects as you see them here. And the crowning of my career was staying on and giving up the four years to do the Staples Center project so that it could be the last and best item on my resume. And to that end, without the support of the project manager, David Ricotello, and my friend and love, my sister Sharon Bates, my sister Sandy Taylor, and all of the people that worked on that project, I say thanks to everyone and thanks to this city and I-- the only sad note that I like to raise is the fact that the ability to acquire property for this city in the manner that we have carried out over the last 20 years is a little disrupted and we need to get that in place so that we can continue the business of redeveloping the City of Los Angeles. And I thank you so very, very much for this honor and I thanks to all of my dear friends and, and my sister Patricia Shannon Nelson, how could I forget her? I just hadn't turned around to see, 'cause these are my arms and my legs, my eyes, who have been there with me through thick and thin. And my sister Mickey, my sister Patsy, my sister Alice, my sis-- everybody, all of the-- and my mom over here, who's like my mom, Sharon's mom, who I share with her since mine is departed. Thank you very, very much for this honor.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Bernstein?
Mr. President, I'd like for Ms. Ceeley to come back to the mic for just a moment, please, if I may be recognized for her. Ms. Ceeley is someone that, uh, I met just a few years ago in the agency as she was dealing with the Staples Arena. And everybody recognizes, uh, what the problems and pitfalls of that negotiation were, but I found Ms. Ceeley to be just a straightforward, straight as an arrow in her, uh, interactions with the community, with, uh, this council office, and I was just very impressed by her capabilities and her dedication to her work. And I consider her just one of the outstanding, uh, city employees with whom I have become acquainted and very proud to say that she served the city well.
I can't thank you enough, Councilman Walters, for, Councilwoman Walters, for those terrific remarks and, as I said, I've always just tried to do my best to do a great job for this agency because it is very, very important to me. I live in this community, I care about this community, and I care about this city, and I thank you so very, very much for your support.
All right, Mr. Bernstein?
Could I ask you two gentlemen to come up here? This is gonna be a two-for-one deal, John.
That sounds good.
They're both, both from Devonshire and, uh, both retiring. Uh, first, we'll do it by rank first. Sorry, Dan. Uh, first is gonna be Lieutenant Paul Wright. A symbol of excellence and integrity is, is officially retired as of February 12th, 2000, after serving the Los Angeles Police Department, City of Los Angeles, for 31 and a half years. Born in Culver City, November 26th, 1946, he attended George Washington High School, who Roosevelt used to beat regularly when I was in school. Upon graduating, Paul pursued his education at Cal State Long Beach where he received a bachelor's science degree. Appointed to the department August 11th, '68, Paul has demonstrated the highest professional standards of law enforcement in the following assignments: Training Division, Venice Patrol Division, Southwest Patrol Division, Management Service Division, Wilshire Patrol Division, West Valley Patrol Division, Hollywood Patrol Division, West Traffic Division. This guy cannot keep a job any one one place, I'm telling you. They keep transferring him out, right, Paul?
Yep.
Uh, North Hollywood Division, Communication, and most important of all of these was Devonshire Patrol and Devonshire Administrative Section. A man of extraordinary stature and brilliance with sagacious judgment, I almost had trouble pronouncing that, Lieutenant Wright has exemplified exceptional skills and execution of city service, having seen commended time, uh, having been commended time and again for his dedication, excellence, professionalism, and preservation in exceeding standards of his position. His great challenges and works were performed not by strength His great challenges and works were performed not by strength alone but by faith, integrity, loyalty, sincerity, and reverence for the law. Whereas unwavering firmness of character and aptitude are significant factor for Paul's ability and positive influence in the area of human relations, a true gentleman that department personnel and citizens feel like comfortable talking with. I'm not going to read this whole thing, because if I do this, we're going to be here all day, Paul. You've got a lot of...
I have work to do.
The one thing that everybody has said to me is that Paul is one of the nicest individuals that you'll ever meet, and that's people that served with you and under you. And I just want to wish you, congratulate you for thirty-one, and thank you for thirty-one and a half years' great service to our city, and wish you the best in your retirement, Paul.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure. You want to say a couple of words here? Go ahead. Then we'll get Ella Fonte in last.
Well, I just want to thank you all for this great award, and I want to thank the City of Los Angeles for having me for thirty years and supporting myself and my family. Thank you again.
Next is somebody that has served the city for a lot of years, but also very close relationship, because not only is Dan Alafonte has served as a senior lead officer among many other assignments with the city, but at Devonshire, but his wife Paula has been in my office as a deputy for a number of years. And we're losing both of them, folks, and that's a blow to the city. Dan is a senior lead officer, P three plus one. His retirement is effective March twenty-fifth, or was effective. Twenty-eight years, two months, and twenty-seven days. You couldn't make it to thirty, huh? Okay. Dan, native Californian, born in nineteen forty-five in Burbank. He graduated from Reseda High School, enlisted the United States Air Force, and achieved the rank of Staff Sergeant. While assigned as line chief, Detachment Eight, Thirty-Eighth Aerospace Rescue and Recovery Squadron, Republic of Vietnam Staff Sergeant, Dan Alafonte Junior distinguished himself while engaged in ground operations against the opposed armed forces, armed force. January thirteenth, sixty-eight to January thirteenth, sixty-nine, and was awarded the Bronze Star for his meritorious service, professional ability, and exemplary leadership. Dan, I'm not going to read all this. I just want to say that I personally have gotten to know Dan extremely well through the years. He has one of the best, he had one of the best neighborhood watch programs probably anywhere in the city in his car, and always strong-armed me to come down and speak before his group, and well-attended. And one of the reasons that we enjoyed such great reductions in crime and acceptance and support by the community for our police department was officers like Dan. Unfortunately, those senior lead officer positions have been phased out, much to the chagrin of many of us, and I think some of us have openly said so, and we will continue to say so, and perhaps the chief will come to a census and reinstate what we think is a very important position in order to have community support and to continue the fight of keeping crime down in our neighborhoods. But Dan and his wife Paula are moving, not only leaving the department, they're leaving Los Angeles, they're moving, what's the name of that community?
Perump.
Perump. Perump. That just sounds like something nasty. It's really a town in Nevada. I won't tell you what the main industry is there, but I'll leave that to your imagination. Dan is not going to go in that business, and in case, the rumors have circulated that Dan and Paula were going to open one of these establishments, but I don't think that's true, right? Okay, anyway, Dan, I want to thank you personally, as well as for the city, for your service and what you've done for our community. I know the people in your car and in the valley are going to really miss both of you, actually. Dan? My pleasure.
Thank you.
Okay? You want to say a couple of words here? We'll take pictures in the back after.
Well, I'll be brief. It's been a great twenty-eight years, but the last twenty have been the most fulfilling as a senior lead officer, and I echo what the councilman says about putting the program back in place, and thank you very much.
Both of you are going to take you back to the quarters, back to this room. I have one more, and then I'll be out of your way here, okay, John? I'd ask Wilma McCullough to please come forward. Wilma, would you come up, please? Wilma McCullough began working for the City of Los Angeles Library Department on January twenty-ninth, nineteen fifty-seven. That was even before John Ferraro started with the city. That's a long time, Wilma. During her tenure, she continually received above-average ratings as positive attitude and very quick with her work. Wilma was transferred to the City Administrative Officers Department on March eighth, nineteen sixty-eight, as a clerk. During her tenure there, she worked with confidential employee relations material pertaining to employee contract negotiation processes, and typically received ratings such as thoroughness in keeping the document and index files up to date, essential in running the unit effectively. And Wilma transferred to the City Planning Department, the important part of the city, John, on January twentieth, nineteen eighty-five, as a senior clerk. Whereas during her tenure at the Office of Zoning Administration, Public Counter, she has been responsible for providing clerical support for a twenty-person staff fielding over two-hundred-and-seventy-five calls from the public per day, maintaining the unit files, including those for coastal approvals, and ordering supplies for the smooth functioning of the unit. On October fifteenth, nineteen ninety-two, Wilma McCullough received a Faithful Service Award from the City Planning Commission, which commended her in part being an indispensable part of the operations of City Hall Public Counter. Her experience and knowledge has contributed to the efficient operation of the department's Construction Services Center. She has provided assistance in a cheerful, friendly, and level-handed manner, even under pressing demands of her position. She has consistently demonstrated a high level of initiative and enthusiasm in performance of her job duties. And whereas Wilma McCullough has consistently exhibited a positive attitude with an outgoing personality and is a real joy to be around, and that seems to be true, Wilma. Whereas Wilma's work is always of high quality, always complete, and always on time, providing her, proving her one of the most capable employees of the department. Now therefore be it resolved that by the adoption of this resolution, the Los Angeles City Council salutes Wilma McCullough for her perseverance and for setting standards of probity, competence, and service to the public. And Los Angeles Planning Department, to which we would all aspire, through her outstanding work, good spirits, and commitment, she has made Los Angeles a better place to live. Well, Wilma, I want to congratulate you and help in honoring you for this.
Thank you, thank you.
And would you like to say a word or two to the...
Yes, I would like to.
Would you have an opportunity?
I would like to thank each and every one of my coworkers and my family, and everyone has been just wonderful to me, and I'm only as good as my previous supervisors and my immediate supervisors and the people that I work with. And I'd like to thank each and every one of you individually and collectively. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes my portion. If you want to follow me back.
Thank you, Councilman Bernson. The chair recognizes Councilman Hernandez for a presentation.
Mr. President, members of the council, could I ask the Franklin High School Women's Basketball Team to please join me? Mr. President, members of the council, we all get a chance to recognize different groups and individuals on Fridays, and that's what Fridays is about, trying to share with people what the spirit of Los Angeles is all about. And I tend to take additional pride when I get to recognize what I call my own, my own history, my own neighborhoods, and today what you have before you is some students at my alma mater, Franklin High, from Franklin High School. And when I was at Franklin High School, we didn't have a women's basketball team. And I'm not nowhere near as old as Mr. Bernson is, but the reality is, women's basketball is surging throughout the country, and it's now a professional sport, and we have young people participating in it at all levels. And the Franklin High School Basketball Team won the City Invitational Championship, and they did it in a way where basically their spirit grew, as their camaraderie grew, as they found out how it was that working together could make a difference. In order to become the city's Invitational Champions, they had to beat Dorsey, Garfield, Venice in the playoffs, and took on Marshall in the Invitational Championship. The team basically was sixteen and nine, and had an eight-and-two record in the Northern Conference. When you understand that kind of a record, you kind of understand that something was happening throughout that season that made them better, and basically allowed them to reach the goal of being the champions. And I think that Coach Wayne Nagata, who's standing to my list, attributed the team's success to a spirit of never giving up. And so, in recognition of that spirit, and in recognition of their accomplishment as city champions, it's my honor to congratulate the Franklin High School Women's Basketball Team for being the city's Invitational Champions. And I have a certificate congratulating them. I'm going to ask their coach, Wayne Nagata, to introduce them to you. We have an individual certificate for each and every one of you, except that the council president told me to make this brief. And so, we'll be presenting that as we take some pictures in the back. And so, Coach, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles and the City Council, we want to issue congratulations to Franklin High School's girls' basketball team on winning the Invitational City Championship.
Well, I'd like to thank Mike for having us down here, and we feel that it's an honor to be here. And when I first got the message that the council wants us to come down for this award, you know, I was kind of shocked, but you know, these girls really worked hard during the season, and they made it happen. I was only on the bench for the ride. You know, without good administrative help, you know, this would never happen. And our assistant principal, who's in charge of athletics, Omar Del Quedo, was right with us every step of the way, all the way to the championship game. I'd like to thank him. And you know, a head coach is only as good as, you know, his assistant or her assistant. And I have an excellent assistant coach, she's our frost soft coach, Alicia Mackey. I'd like to thank her. Now I'd like to introduce our team. Probably the biggest girl Franklin ever had, and probably includes the boys, too. Lily Ann Ramirez. Desiree Huerta, our forward. Patricia Luna. Griselda Navarro. Erica Estrella. Jessica Ponse. Alma Mejia. Diane Salazar. Jennifer Cook. And Diana Paredes. These young ladies spend a lot of extra time working hard, and as a coach, as a coach, we appreciate that. Thank you very much, council.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, members of council.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Let me, we have one ordinance, so let's, item number one, is there any discussion on item number one? Item number one, if not, prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Now, the Pioneer Women introduction for today, we have a special presentation, and one that comes about through a partnership between the members of the City Council and the Commission on the Status of Women. Each year, we, in honor of Women's History Month, we celebrate the accomplishments of women in the City of Los Angeles and give special awards to extraordinary women from throughout the city. I would like to introduce Paula Parada, Executive Director of the Commission on the Status of Women, to start this year's presentation. Paula?
Thank you, Councilman Ferraro. As you know, the Pioneer Women Program is a joint program between the council and the commission to celebrate the pioneering spirit of women who have taken on the tough and often thankless challenge of helping our communities to thrive. And this year's two thousand awardees are a prime example of that. They use everything they have to fight for what they believe in, collectively and modestly. They say they're just basically giving back to the city. We want to commend them today for their leadership, their courage, their sacrifice, and their philanthropy. Before we start the program, I just want to also thank Channel Thirty-Five for their production of Pioneer Women. They do a lot of work on that program, and in fact, several years ago, we won an Emmy for our pioneer program. With that, I want to introduce the President of the Commission on the Status of Women, Commissioner Julia Wu.
Thank you, Paula. On behalf of the Los Angeles City Commission on Status of Women, it is my great pleasure to congratulate our Pioneer Women's Honorees today. As you know, that March is the Women's History Month, and as we are moving toward the end of the History Month, Women's History Month, we are here to honor a group of Pioneer Women who have devoted their energy and efforts to better the life for not only women but also the entire society. So I'm here to congratulate them and to thank them for their great accomplishment and the service to the city. Also, I'd like to take just one minute to thank the council for your support in participating in this Pioneer Women's Day for the last decade, I think more than a decade since nineteen eighty-nine. Without your support, this event cannot be successful. And also, meanwhile, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank our staff for doing such a wonderful job in putting this event together and make it a very successful event. Thank you so much.
Okay, I'm going to call first Mr. Pacheco, who has to leave. And before, I want to also ask the council members to look at item four, it's another ordinance, and if you have any problem with that, we're going to take it up after this.
The first thing I have to do, Mr. President and colleagues, is I have to remind Ms. Duffy that I have to speak first, okay? For those of you who know Ms. Duffy, you'll know what I mean.
We'll have a time limit on...
Yeah, we'll have a time limit. It's really an honor and a pleasure to be here and present someone to you who I have really grown to admire in the past few years. I met Ms. Duffy as a charter reform commissioner, as I went out and did some community meetings. We briefly met, and during my campaign, Ms. Duffy came around and gave me sixty-four-thousand-dollar questions about my commitment to serving the district, and her basic question was, what are you going to do for Eagle Rock? And I said, I'm going to do for Eagle Rock what I do for everyone in my district, I'm going to serve them the best I can. And that was her way of testing me to make sure that I wasn't only looking at one part but looking at everyone equally. And that's one of the things that Ms. Duffy has always done in her life. She's always looked at everyone equally, whether you're a part of her group in Eagle Rock, or whether you're part of a group that's not supported by the system. She was one of the, she is currently one of the members of the Eagle Rock Chamber of Commerce. She's also a member of the Sons of Italy in America. She's a charter member of Blend, which is Business for Law Enforcement Northeast Division. She's a member of the Haven House, which has assisted battered and abused women and children. She's also a member of Children of the Night, which assists with runaway children. And she is a charter member and president of the Seroptimist International. Ms. Duffy has worked very hard, is one of our civic leaders in the community... Ms. Duffy has worked very hard, is one of our civic leaders in the community. She also has been recognized through the city of Los Angeles back in nineteen eighty-one as Volunteer of the Year. She also received the humanitarian award from Peggy Stevenson, I believe one of our former colleagues here. Also was Woman of the Year for Western University Medical School and has been recognized by many individuals for her courageous work in the community. If you know Ms. Duffy, like I know her, she will always tell you what's on her mind and feel free to tell her what's on your mind because she gives it out as well as she takes it. So, we appreciate, appreciate her for her frankness and she's always been there, working hard for her community. And for that, we have chosen Ms. Duffy to receive this certificate of commendation as our 2,000 Pioneer Woman for Council District Fourteen.
Say a few words.
I didn't even say a word yet and he said, "That's enough." And John left the council and I thought for a minute, he left because he saw me. Joe Wax is here, I see, and Mike Hernandez. You know, I'm, I was really shocked and I, I have to tell you, I'm not really accustomed to speaking, just in the background. That's the truth. But I'm very, very lucky, I really am. I wanna thank everyone for this award, especially Nick and his crew is wonderful. They keep you active, keep you informed. Let me tell you, it's wonderful. You know, people have to get involved. They have to know the people that are supporting them. They don't know what you want unless you go tell them. And if you don't tell them, they don't know. I wanna introduce my family, 'cause without my family in the beginning, when I went through all of this, I couldn't have done it without them. Come on up, gang.
Real quick.
Real quick, they're not giving me much time. Get her up here. Where's my son? I do have a son, son-in-law, daughter-in-law, okay. First.
Don't introduce everybody.
Yes, I am. Yes, I am. Don't introduce everybody. Yes, I am.
We don't have all day, Eleanor.
All right, John, you're at me again. You know, I've known John a real long time.
Forty years.
No, not quite that long. But anyways, my son, Jim Duffy, works with heavy equipment for the city. My daughter, Maureen. Judge Duffy Lewis. My daughter, Mary Eleanor.
Sheila.
My daughter, where is she? Sheila, who flew in from Miami with her daughter, Alexis.
Daughter-in-law.
My daughter-in-law, Jan, who works upstairs in Personnel. My brother, please, my brother, who introduces me as his oldest sister. Just a minute, no, wait a minute, no, wait a minute. My grandson.
And granddaughter.
And granddaughter.
Granddaughters.
Two granddaughters, Melissa, Kellyanne.
And RJ.
And RJ.
Thank you.
You know, everybody introduces everybody, but no.
You have one more?
Oh, my son-in-law, Ronald, an attorney.
Eleanor, we do have a time limit in the council.
Thank you very much for everything.
Okay. I know Eleanor so well, I think I can do that and get away with it. Okay, we have item number four before us. Prepare the roll, tabulate the vote. That's a motion by Ms. Galanter.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. I'm gonna call next Rudy Savornich, who came in special to make this presentation, from, from all the way from San Pedro.
We'll stop when we get to third cousins, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Council. It is indeed a pleasure this morning to join in the festivities as we honor the Pioneer Women for this year in the city of Los Angeles. Standing next to me is Mary Ann Cypher, who is the Pioneer Woman for the Fifteenth Council District. I can als, I can almost tell you of all her accomplishments without reading it here off the sheet, but I think I would miss something. And so, if you'd just give me a moment, I will read what we have here today. The community of Harbor Gateway, where Mary Ann resides, is a very important part of the city of Los Angeles as well as the Fifteenth Councilmanic District. The name Harbor Gateway is due to Mary Ann's efforts. During the tenure of my predecessor, Joan Milky Flores, there was an effort to decide on what to name a portion of the city of Los Angeles that had been previously referred to as the Los Angeles City Strip. And during that period of time, Mary Ann was the spearhead of many community leaders that worked together to come up with the name Harbor Gateway, which was truly a better symbol of what to call the community of that region. One of the things to which Mary Ann also participated is that she was the first chair of the Fifteenth Council District Advisory Committee, serving for many, many years in that role. She has been a tireless volunteer for the past thirty years, has been active in many organizations, namely, the Harbor Lights, which is an auxiliary of the Los Angeles Police Department Harbor Division. Harbor Light stands for Ladies Involved in Time, Effort, and Service. She is an LAPD-trained volunteer and surveillance team member. She is co-chair of Harbor Division's Community Police Advisory Board and co-chair of the annual Blues in the Night fundraising event, which has raised tens of thousands of dollars towards capital improvements to the Harbor Division Station. Her many honors have included the PTA Honorary Service Award, Little League Recognition Award, the LAPD Volunteer Award, the City of Los Angeles Citizen of the Year Award, the YWCA Citizen of the Year Award, and the Harbor City Harbor Gateway Chamber of Commerce Citizen of the Year Award. This is one wonderful community member. Her impressive civic involvement is a sign of her dedication to the Harbor Gateway community. She has been a member of the Harbor Gateway Community Association for over thirty years. She is also a trained safety net leader and has been a block captain for thirty years. She led the way to the passage of legislation restricting adult entertainment storefronts from within five hundred feet of a school or residential neighborhood. She was a graduate of Saint Francis Academy in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, where incidentally, she started the first women's basketball team in the city of Pittsburgh. She is currently the administrator of the San Pedro branch of the Volunteer Center of the South Bay Harbor Long Beach areas, where she has been employed for the past five years. However, her greatest accomplishment, and I know she is so proud of it, is the raising her, of her five grown children, which she raised as a single parent, her seven grandchildren and one great-grandchild. Her involvement in the community has been passed to the next generation as her children also possess a great responsibility and desire to help others. Mr. President, Members of the Council, would you please join me in honoring one truly great lady, Mary Ann Cypher's Pioneer Woman of the Fifteenth District for this year? Congratulations. A salute. A few words?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwomen Savornich and council members. I'm very honored to receive this award. And usually, now I'm standing here, I'm fighting for something, but to receive something without a fight is very rewarding. I've always been a thorn in everybody's side and I love that position. I don't think I'm gonna change. But I want to say thank you to my family, who were behind me in everything that I've done, to the community members, to the Los Angeles city members who helped me, and also to the police department, who helped us in our many endeavors. And we're here to stay, so get used to this face. We're here. Thank you again.
Congratulations. You're very welcome. Very welcome.
Okay, Mr. Savornich, now we'll start in a regular order.
Mr. President, Members of the Council, it's my pleasure to, to honor Mary Edwards as our Pioneer Woman of the Year for the Twelfth District. I'm not gonna read all these things that are on here. I'm just gonna speak from my heart and tell you what I know and have experienced firsthand with Mary, because Mary has been active in our community, working for our community betterment with the North Hills Coalition from before the time I was in office, actually, and that's going back a few days. But Mary has been the leader of the North Hills Coalition battle against the Sunshine Canyon landfill. She's devoted her time, energy, money, and a lot of leadership to our community in that endeavor, which we all are grateful for. And in spite of your action, eight to six, eight to seven, it's not over yet, right, Mary? Anyway, Mary, it's my great pleasure to honor you as our Pioneer Woman of the Year. Thank you for all you've done, okay?
The way that I look at it is, the way that you have honored us is touching, but the way you can really honor us, and I'm gonna be outspoken, as my friend Hal was, about the lead, senior lead officers, the way you really honor us is to rid these halls of lobbyists and special interests, to try very hard to look at all constituents of all areas as your constituents. So, when we pick up the phone, we know that you're not gonna look at a boundary line and find out whether you are voting for you or not, but you will look and say, "This is somebody I care about," no matter where they live, from San Pedro to the San Fernando Valley. We need you to care. We need you to be honorable. And this is what, this is the way you honor the people of LA. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Mr. Fier, it's my understanding you wanna reconsider item thirty on yesterday's agenda for the purpose of continuing.
That's correct, Mr. President. If we could, please.
Check your book. This is to make some corrections.
That's right. DOT requested the change, to make corrections regarding a storm drain project.
All right, there are no objections. No objections, the matter is reconsidered and it's a motion to continue until April Fourth. There's no objection, that will be the order.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Proceed, Mr. R.
Thank you very much. I have a special treat this morning. Many of you know the Pioneer Woman whom we've selected in Council District Five, Dorothy Green. Dorothy Green is known to you and indeed throughout the city of Los Angeles and well beyond our borders for being one of the earliest champions of so many important causes, principally environmental causes as well as campaign finance reform. I mean, here is a woman without whom the Santa Monica Bay would clearly be much less clean than it is today. She was the leader who founded Heal the Bay. She was the person who was pushing throughout this process and worked closely with our friend Felicia Marcus to make such important innovations happen that have helped protect our water and therefore the health and safety of our families, our kids, all who use our beaches and our bay. Dorothy, as I mentioned, was the founder of Heal the Bay in nineteen eighty-five and served as its president until January nineteen ninety-one and continues to be active as a board member. She also is the president of the Los Angeles and San Gabriel Rivers Watershed Council. This is indicative of a lifelong truly career, whether or not it's for compensation or not. Dorothy is working very hard in her current role to assure that the Los Angeles River is treated as not merely a storm drain, not merely as a flood control channel, but as a real resource throughout its entire course, as it runs through the city and county of Los Angeles. She also has served as a commissioner to our Department of Water and Power, appointed by Mayor Bradley, and served as a member of the Governing Board of Common Cause, both on a state and a national level. Dorothy has truly shown us that one person can make an enormous difference in the lives of people whom she will, in many cases, never even meet. I know my kids, my future grandkids, and all in the city will look to Dorothy and recognize that her legacy is that their lives have been made so much better. And it's a real privilege for me to be able to present to Dorothy Green this Pioneer Woman of the Year honor from the Fifth Council District. It's from the Fifth District, Dorothy, but it really could easily be presented on behalf of all in Los Angeles. Congratulations and thank you for your lifetime of commitment.
Thank you, Dorothy.
I really think it's been a privilege to be able to serve this city in many different capacities and it's always been as a volunteer. And I guess maybe that in a way is the, the best way to be able to do it, because I don't have to earn a living, I'm doing it because I wanna do it. And for you to have given me that opportunity over the years to provide that service and especially my own councilman, Mr. Fier here, it's an honor which I'm really grateful for. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dorothy, very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Fier.
Mr. President, before I start on my speech about Ruth Lansford that I've been waiting years to give, I just wanna say about Dorothy Green before she leaves, that one of her really lasting contributions to the city was that after bellyaching about it for a long time, she finally got the Department of Water and Power to change the way we look at the sale of water, so that we now reward people for saving instead of rewarding people for using more. And I sat through about ten years of those speeches, so I remember this. It is my pleasure to recognize this year as Pioneer Woman for the Sixth District, Ruth Lansford. Ruth is the person who discovered the Biona Wetlands before anybody else was born. And, well, just about. Starting twenty-something years ago, when a number of people, when Howard Hughes still owned the property and he was still alive, Ruth began an organization called the Friends of Biona Wetlands, which has worked in, through periods of great success and great frustration ever since, to maintain and to try to protect and restore what is left of the Biona Wetlands. And of course, you all hear a great deal from a lot of people in this chamber about the Biona Wetlands all the time. This is the woman who saved, who created the conditions that allow us even to have a controversy today. If it weren't for Ruth Lansford, those wetlands would have been built on many years ago and there'd be nothing for all those other people we see all the time to even fight about. And I think that, let's see, Ruth started out as I did in New York, but I didn't know her there. She's been living in Playa del Rey for a long time. She and her husband, Bill, who I saw here someplace, do a lot of work on films as well as saving wetland plants. And Bill is also involved in recognizing some of the Chicano veterans in our armed forces. But I think that Ruth really deserves a remarkable set of congratulations for the persistence that she has shown and her dedication to good science, making sure that the programs for saving the wetlands are programs that really will work, that are based in science, based in reality, and achievable. She's now, in addition to president of the Friends of Biona Wetlands, also the, a member of- She's now, in addition to president of the Friends of Biona Wetlands, also the, a member, a board member and head of the Biona Wetlands Foundation, which has been set up as a partnership by the landowner, the city government, and the Friends of Biona to actually manage the restoration, and we have great hopes that this is all actually going to come to pass as long as Ruth Lansford can stay healthy and patient. And so, Ruth, it's really an honor and a pleasure to stand up here with you one more time and recognize you as a Pioneer Woman for the 6th District of the City of Los Angeles. And thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Yes, we have these for you, too.
Oh, boy. Thank you very much.
They're not pickleweed.
Oh, okay.
I apologize, but I know they're not pickleweed.
Well, you shouldn't pick that anyway.
Yeah.
I want to thank the Commission on the Status of Women, and especially Councilwoman Galanter and the City Council for this honor. And most of all, I want to thank the over 26,000 volunteers who have been out there at the wetland, not all at the same time, but they've been out there, and they have been restoring this wetland, and they've been giving their time and their hearts and their money to making a dream that we've all had for many years come true. And I also want to thank my husband, who's been unfailingly supportive, if cranky at times. But at any rate, I do thank him very much, and thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Galanter. Mr. Hernandez, I think you have two to present.
Mr. President, members of the council, the 1st Councilmatic District's Pioneer Woman of the Year is Sharon Low, and I'd like her to come up. Why don't your son come up also? Have him come up. Oh, yes, well, I get to embarrass him there. I think he was about five years old, four years old, when I first met him.
Yes.
First, I'll just give a quick bio on Sharon, and then I'll say my own words in regards to why in the 1st Councilmatic District we felt she should be recognized. Sharon started as a community activist in 1985, primarily with the Chinatown redevelopment project. Her education began in 1977, and she received her Bachelor of the Arts of New York University, Washington Square University College. She continued her education in California and received her Juris Doctorate from the University of California, Los Angeles School of Law. She's currently a sole practitioner and a community consultant, and I want to put an emphasis on community consultant. She works cooperatively with the Community Civil Family and Youth Law. She emphasizes family law litigation, dealing with domestic abuse, child support, and custody and visitation, children's rights, civil rights, education, tenants' rights, and community and argument development, environmental justice issues as part of her domain. In 1995, Sharon worked with Legal Aid Foundation in Los Angeles. In 1994, she was the managing attorney for the Central Community Office. She currently has numerous amounts of community experience. She currently is the president, the president of parent volunteer at Newman Elementary School, facilities and education, environmental advocacy, and she's working on a highly gifted magnet program access issue in East LA. Now, I just wanted to give you that background, because now I get to talk about Sharon Low the way I know her. And I first met Sharon, she was printing T-shirts at the Alpine Recreation Center, and I was working with an organization called the Northeast J.C.'s. And then you need to understand that at that time, we were trying to figure out how to get people involved with the LA Marathon, and she was part of that. I then, basically, when I chose to run for the City Council, Sharon Low also made that same decision. And she was one of the candidates who ran, and basically, nobody thought she had a chance, but you need to understand she made the runoff. And she was the candidate I ran against in the runoff, and I'm not sure who was the lucky one. After that, I met Sharon again in regards to community issues. And what was real refreshing is she was always representing the community, and it made it easy for me to support her. There were some major issues in dealing with the Pasadena Blue Line, which now I chair, where Sharon basically represented three communities in the lawsuit, the Trilateral Community Lawsuit, and we basically settled that lawsuit. But what you need to understand that today, that settlement is an important document when the, basically, MTA is, did not pass on that information, and we're using that document as something they have to comply with. You also need to know that the Alpine Recreation Center in Chinatown, Sharon made sure that it got completed, but then after it got completed, we found that a lot of the work was faulty, a lot of the work was shabby, and she basically called me in and said, "We've got to do something about it." We know that we had this place head start students, where she basically played a real active role in making sure that that childcare service was not lost. Just recently, she pointed out to us that there was lead base paint. We found out that when they developed that recreation center and repainted it, they used lead base. And again, that became another issue the department had to clear up. You need to understand that this morning, she talked to me about the gym floor that was warped and we have to work on, and some of the basketball courts that need to happen. She's tenacious, and she doesn't give up. Now, we thought she should be recognized for the right reasons. She's the kind of person who chooses to represent the community, and she represents communities that have very few representatives. I admire Sharon Low for her work. I respect her work, and I consider her an advisor for the 1st Councilmatic District. She might not see it that way, but when she calls me, it's pretty automatic as to what I have to do. And because of those kinds of activities, I just wanted Sharon to understand that we've had a list of pioneer women who I believe have been very much part of the community, and we want to recognize Sharon Low for your 2,000 Pioneer Women selected by Los Angeles City Commission on the Status of Women, for an exemplary record of commitment, longtime responsible involvement, and numerous significant contributions to the support and protection and awareness of the valuable accomplishments of women in our society, through this personal dedication in enriching and strengthening our community and making the city of Los Angeles a much better place in which we all live in. Again, thank you, Sharon.
Thank you very much, Mike. You know, when I got the call from your office, I was rather shocked. I hadn't called you, so I was wondering why I was getting a call. Usually I get a quick call back, so I do appreciate that. I'm very proud to be here today. As I said, I was shocked when the office called me and said that Mike was recommending me for the Pioneer Women 2000 Award, because Mike and I did run against each other, but one thing I can take my hat off to Mike, I give him a lot of credit. Whenever I've called since our runoff in 1991, when my oldest son here, who is one of my proudest achievements, was five, Mike has always responded to my questions, to my inquiries on behalf of the community, and he made it a lot easier. And in reality, he's right, I'm the lucky one, because I enjoy being on this side of the podium. I enjoy being the proud advocate. I have the pleasure of having represented communities throughout the 1st District, and representing communities in South Central, other parts of East Los Angeles, working with community organizations, women and children, and wherever the issues of the communities of color, particularly the rights of children and women, are, you will find me. I've had the pleasure of working in South Central, working with the Community Coalition Against Substance Abuse, Mothers of East LA, Santa Isabel, and the Tri-Communities Organization in Highland Park, Cypress Park, Glazewell Park Communities, and Elysian Valley. And it's really important to recognize the multi-diversity of these communities, that strength, and I've had that pleasure. I hope that when Mike made, decided to recommend me, that he wasn't giving the City Council a death knell, because this is the start of a new century. That means I'm going to be here for a while, and I'm going to keep on arguing and advocating on behalf of the interests for environmental justice, particularly the rights of children and women. So that empowerment, I inherited that legacy from my father and the strength and fortitude from my mother, and I hope to pass it down to my two sons, who are my proudest achievements in life. And one thing I have to tell them both, they have a mother who's going to raise them to be extremely sensitive and understanding of the rights of women. So these boys are going to be raised the right way, because as mothers, we're the one who make the men in this world, so it's time for us to start raising them right. Thank you.
And I'm going to ask Kevin, and he'll help me a second. And I'm going to ask Kevin, and he'll help me a second. Kevin, will you present these flowers to your mother?
Now I get embarrassed.
Again, thank you, Madam President. Thank you, members of the council. I'll be back to write. Mr. President, members of the council, Councilmember Jackie Goldberg was not able to be here today and asked if I'd make her presentation for her, and I'm asking if Carmen Parada would please come on. Come on a second. Carmen Parada is a longtime leader in the East Hollywood neighborhood throughout Council District 13. She's consistently fought for the fairness and representation in East Hollywood, and CD 13 residents were often left out of the public decision-making. La señora Carmen Parada ha sido una parte del lideraje del área de la ciudad de Hollywood por varios años. Y continúa de pelear o representar la gente que no es parte de las decisiones públicas. She's president of the Ford Street Housing Cooperative and Affordable Housing Co-op that was started when Caltrans took housing to build the Glendale Freeway, one of the most important tasks that Carmen has undertaken at the Co-op is to set up a system of annual elections to select co-op leadership. Es la presidenta de la Avenida Cuatro, la Cooperativa sobre viviendas, y ha tratado de pelear representando a las personas contra Caltrans cuando estaban quitándoles las viviendas ahí en esa vecindad, ¿verdad? Y una de las cosas más importantes que ha hecho es poner un sistema para elecciones para que puedan seleccionar el lideraje de esa organización. Carmen has been an important voice in the development of a long-term neighborhood plan for the Vermont Quarter. She has pushed for positive development for low-income and transit-dependent residents of East Hollywood. Carmen ha sido una voz importante para el desarrollo económico en la vecindad del Vermont Quarter. Y ha hecho mucho ella para las personas de menos recursos y que son dependientes en tránsito público. As a leader, she not only represents the Co-op in the neighborhood, but develops others' leadership abilities and encourages their participation. Como parte del lideraje, ella está tratando de desarrollar otras personas en el lideraje de ellos y quiere que participen en la comunidad. Most recently, Carmen has been a key organizer of the Rosewood Community Garden. In this capacity, she did door-to-door outreach to recruit 25 families to participate in the garden. She has organized and led the group as they convert vacant and nuisance lot into productive community garden. Más recién, Carmen ha sido la organizada la comunidad de Rosewood sobre un jardín. Y fue puerta a puerta para traer a 25 familias para participar en ese jardín. Y fue la, ayudó a organizar esta comunidad para que tuvieran un lote que era un problema y ahora es un jardín. Carmen was an appointee to an important city parks advisory committee, where she fought tirelessly for fair distribution of new parks and recreation facilities. Carmen también ha servido como una persona de un comité que ha peleado para tener distribución de recursos sobre nuevos parques y felicidades de recreación en la área. Carmen is Council District 13's Pioneer Woman of the Year because of her rich past as a leader and her continued commitment to women, immigrants, East Hollywood, and the broad cause of social justice. And Councilmember Goldberg would like to congratulate her. I said a few words in Spanish on Carmen's behalf, at the request of Councilmember Goldberg, and I want her to say a few words. Pero Carmen, le queremos dar muchas gracias por su lideraje en la comunidad, y queremos que usted sepa que el trabajo que está haciendo es muy importante, y le agradecemos ese trabajo. And I just shared with her that we appreciate the work she's doing, and the work that she does is extremely important, and we appreciate that, those commitments.
Thanks for the Council of Los Angeles, especially to Councilwoman Jackie Goldberg, who appoint to me this award, and I'm really proud to be here in this side where the, all you visiting members make a decision of our life. So we are in our communities, waiting for your decision, has to be with your heart and thinking in our future children's. So I, I don't want to be alone with me, I want to call all my neighbors and friends who have been enjoying to me this moment. Please, my husband, my two daughters, come out here with me, and my co-op housing members, my friends, David Ettesadi, he's a lawyer, so who will help in, my legal advisor to me, and my friends, Brenda Fuentes, my members of the Board Director of the Forestry Co-op, and I want to thank to Dan, because without Dan, this, this award couldn't be possible. And another thing I would like to tell now, that is my brother, too, he's a student at the Nordridge University, and I'm proud of him because he's really following the system for go ahead and development, our achievement for help this great city of Los Angeles without the poverty. One dream to me as a woman is, it's a, really, it's a big name, Pioneer Women 2000. So I want to let you know, that is my first time here, so you will be here from me the whole year, fighting for Belmont High School continuation, and we have to defeat the Proposition 21, that really is a criminal proposition unfortunately passed, but if we want to continue to the future, to raise our poverty in the children, we need to defeat like how we defeated the 187 proposition. Thank you, everybody, and please join our communities, because they are waiting for you. They are waiting, you really think, like a development, the business, Staples Center, we have to develop at least 10 high schools in LA. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. The Chair recognizes Council President Ferraro.
Madam President, members of the council, it's my great pleasure today to present to the Pioneer Woman Award for the 4th District, Barbara Eck, someone who's made an outstanding contribution to the strength and vitality of the Los Angeles community. Barbara relocated here from Chicago in 1967, which was one of her probably smartest moves she's ever made, and took a job teaching school while pursuing an acting career in television in her spare time. Despite appearances in The Young and Restless, General Hospital, were you that sexy woman in that?
I know.
Mrs. Eck has found that she loved working with children and preferred to teach rather than show business. Her teaching career spanned 32 years at Encino Elementary School, where she was beloved and indispensable part of the campus life until her retirement. Barbara also rose to prominence as a dedicated community leader, always willing to volunteer time and leadership in response, in response to the neighborhood's problems. She was a founder of the Neighborhood Action Group, which focused on crime and other problems on Sunset Boulevard. She co-pounded the Spaulding Square Neighborhood Association, which has accomplished a great deal to enhance and preserve an eight-block residential jewel in our city. In her spare time, she's been acting in her church. She works as a volunteer in the 1984 Olympics Summer Games. She dabbled in her show business as show avocation, acting in commercials and soap operas during the summer. I'm proud to present as a Pioneer Woman, Barbara Rose Eck. It's fitting the recognition of her outstanding record of service to her community and her lifelong commitment lifelong commitment to improve the quality of life in our neighborhoods. She's been married since 1969 to Joe Eck, composer, arranger, and singer. Is he here today?
He's here.
Joe, would you please come forward? Members of the council, my pleasure to introduce Barbara Eck and thank her for her great work in the city of Los Angeles.
I'd like to thank Councilman John Ferraro and the City Council members for this award. I know that there are hundreds of women in Los Angeles who volunteer their time and efforts, many, many hours of them, to improve and upgrade the quality of life in their communities, their neighborhoods, and therefore in the city of Los Angeles. So I'm extremely privileged to be one of 15 women chosen this year to receive this award. For the past 10 years, we've worked very hard in Spaulding Square. It's a little neighborhood in Hollywood comprised of eight blocks. We are a historic preservation overlay zone now. And the work that we have done and the board has done, this work has spilled out not only into our neighborhood but into the surrounding neighborhoods and to the business district. And Councilman Ferraro and his staff, including Renee Weitzer and Anne Marie Ruse and Lupe Franco-Butler have been a tremendous source of help and support and encouragement to all of us, and we are very grateful to them. So I would like to also thank my husband of 31 years for his support, and I'm very, very honored to receive this award today. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Ferraro. The chair recognizes Councilmember Holden.
Before I honor Ms. Qualls, the 10th District, I just want to say that the City Attorney of the City of Los Angeles, Jane Kenneth Hahn, sends greetings and best wishes to all of the women today who are being honored, and also to the commission and the status of women for putting this program together. Let's give Mr. Hahn a big hand. Mr. Wax will speak on his own behalf. Pretty good, huh, Joe?
Let's get close to the line.
Yes, all right. Let's do that. Ms. Audrey Qualls is a good friend of mine and a good friend of my district and the entire city of Los Angeles. She's a model of selfless dedication and commitment to the community. Ms. Qualls has lived in the 10th District for over 40 years, where she is a retired Los Angeles Unified School District teacher, and where she has been a member of the Second Baptist Church, Reverend Kelgor's church.
Right.
Since 1947, before most of the council persons were born. They don't know what's going on today.
No.
They don't know what's happening. And Ms. Qualls is a member, she's very active in the community, member of many organizations, but to name a few, the National Association of University Women. She has worked with the Urban League Guild, 12 Big Sisters, the Brotherhood Crusade, and also the Service Council of California of the African-American Museum. But you know what, Joe? She dabs in politics. She's been an active member of the New Frontier Democratic Club, where I know you are gonna be going over there.
Right.
He drives through my neighborhood, he can see that project over there. And she's also involved with our youth, working on projects to raise funds for pregnant teenagers, to encourage them to care for themselves, their loved ones. She was honored by many associations or organizations, but also by the Women of Distinction by Lotte Phi Lambda Sorority. She has been a delegate once again in politics to Jesse Jackson and attended Democratic National Convention in San Francisco. Now, you gotta be really active to get yourself elected as a delegate, am I right?
Right.
And you always supported me, didn't you?
Always.
All right. You know, I love you when you first stood up here, but now I love you a lot. Ms. Audrey Qualls is a phenomenal community activist, and we're lucky to have her in the 10th District as a Pioneer Woman of the Year, Y2K. Now, if I kiss you on both cheeks, you're not gonna say anything about it?
No. Uh-oh, I need some money.
Oh, California State Woman of the Year, awesome. Yay.
Yay. I'm so glad. First, I have to give thanks to my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, that I'm able to stand up here. And I'm so happy I have many friends with me because it's very empty. It's getting pretty empty in here. So I have my own crew. And also, I would like to say our Office Study Club and the Vattered Women's Shelter because that's close to my heart also. I would like to introduce my family and friends. I have my three daughters, Karen Mills, where are you? Stephanie, Dr. Stephanie Jackson, Pamela Vazell, my niece Linda Sasso.
Henry.
Is Henry here? My son is here. Come up here, baby, by me.
How you doing, Mom?
Fine. Because my other son, he lives in Los Altos. He would be here, but I didn't tell him because I didn't want him to fly down. Now, let me see. My dear friends, all of these are my dear friends. And I would like for you to know also that Mrs. Kelgor is here. Come on up here, Mrs. Kelgor. Step out. This was my pastor's wife. Everybody knows Pastor Reverend Dr. Kelgor. And I don't think I'll call everybody's name because I may miss some, so come in close so they can see you. Okay. I don't know anything else I'd like to say other than I will be working with Nate Holden on the Democratic.
Ticket.
Ticket and committee. When he was running, I was at his office every day, but I didn't get paid. I want you to know that. So I'm happy he won, otherwise I would not be standing here. Thank you, Nate Holden.
Thank you and those other 11,000 people.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. The chair recognizes Councilmember Mizikowski.
Madam President, I am proud to present the Pioneer Women 2000 Award for the 11th District Council nominee, Flora Gil Kristaloff. And as I've listened to the other council members and their amazing nominees, there is one thing that is so striking. Again and again and again, the word is "community," and Flora is no different from that. Flora is a dedicated Los Angeles citizen, a lifelong community volunteer. She is a wife and mother of three sons, and she has centered her life around education, health, and well-being to children in the context of community. Flora's, I think, been driven by three principles: love of learning, love of family, and love of community. She started, actually was born in Hong Kong and emigrated to this country by way of a lot of other countries. But she began her career in getting a bachelor's degree in nursing at UCLA, then got a master's in nursing and primary ambulatory health later. And then about 10 years later, she went back to school and got an MBA in the Graduate School of Management at UCLA in finance and marketing. So she is incredibly well-rounded, but what she has done with those talents is give them back to community. Her community experience fills three pages, and I'll just give you some of the highlights. Mostly, it's been as a volunteer, starting with schools and in her community with her children. From Canyon Elementary School to working with the L.A. Unified School District in terms of making it better, to working as an original founding member of the Palisades Education Complex, one of the first charter school complexes authorized through the state when that was available. She has also given back to community in terms of betterment of the community, working and has been a longtime member of the San Vicente Design Review Board, helping to create a San Vicente scenic plan corridor process. She's been involved in the John Wayne Cancer Institute, the Terry Fox-run, co-chairman of student involvement. She's also worked with helping kids know that kids need to give back to community, and she's been involved in a number of different programs that do that. Most recently, shortly after I was elected, I asked Flora to serve a lot with a number of other people in the community on a Brentwood Community Council, sort of a model of the neighborhood councils that were going to be seen and now mandated throughout the city. And I think in recognition of Flora, we had on this community council of 19 members from all walks of life, all types of people, from business communities, religious communities, education communities, homeowner communities, and just all-around community activists. That group of people in that community elected Flora their first chair of the Brentwood Community Council. So among her peers, among those who served community, she was selected. And I think there's a reason. In addition to all these really valuable things that she does, she does it with incredible grace, incredible positive attitude, and tempered judgment. She is passionate about what she believes in, but she's also passionate about letting others express their beliefs and finding a way to moderate that and bring that forward for consensus in community. So Flora, it's with great pleasure and pride that I am nominating you.
Thank you, Cindy.
As Pioneer Woman.
Thank you, Cindy. Thank you, all of you council people, for this recognition and for this wonderful celebration of the Pioneer Women of Los Angeles for the year 2000. I do very much have to thank Cindy, though, for being responsible for my activism within the city, because 15 years ago, my husband and I moved into Brentwood. My oldest one was just a year old at the time. And there were some issues in our community, and I called Council District 11 and met Cindy and Mary, who's still in the West L.A. office. And from then on, I realized that there was a way to communicate with the city of L.A. and make a difference, and thank you so much for all your encouragement. And, you know, with Cindy in office now, her staff is terrific in Council District 11. I'd have to thank all of her staff for being so responsive, especially now that I'm the chair of the community council, I have to call them all the time. But I so much appreciate working with all of her staff. And I'd like to thank you also, as council people, for implementing and speeding along the process for neighborhood empowerment as well as for regional area planning commissions. Thank you so much. And last of all, I'd want to thank my family for all of their support. Without them, none of this would be meaningful, nor would I have the energy to do it. My mother, who will be 80 in August, she's responsible for bringing us to this country. I am an immigrant that was naturalized many years ago, but in 1960, my mother and my father picked up from Taiwan, brought my three sisters and I over to this country. We came over in stages. We weren't sure if we would be able to stay. We lived in Santa Fe Springs. My father and mother didn't speak any English. My father went and worked in a factory. My mother worked for the first time. And it's a tribute to them that 40 years later, here I am. So thank you, Mom. And then I want to thank my wonderful husband, Milton, for all of his support, and my son, Kevin, Scott, and Matthew. Thank you so much.
Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. It's certainly my pleasure and honor to nominate Barbara Perkins as the 7th Council District Pioneer Woman of the Year. Her list of credentials is very, very long, and we could be here all day if we were to cite every single thing that Barbara Perkins has done for the community, from local grassroots-based nonprofit organizations to the work she's done to bridge Los Angeles Valley College and Los Angeles Mission College to the community. I first met Barbara back in 1995, when I began to become involved in electoral politics and in trying to do outreach to the community and gain support for a candidate I was helping. One of the names that kept coming up over and over and over again, you have to meet, you have to get to know, you have to talk to, Barbara Perkins. And in meeting her and getting to know her, it was very, very evident as to why, not only why she's involved, but why she has such a large following of people who admire her and respect her and listen to her. I mentioned her involvement, and over the course of years, we had an opportunity to actually work together on some local community programs and also serve on the boards of directors together for a number of organizations, including the Valley Leadership Institute, which we both went through. And I think we developed a pretty good friendship there. And we were probably both shocked at each other and shocked just a few folks in the district when we were both candidates for the 7th Council District. And I mentioned that for two reasons. Number one, I was proud to earn her support in the second part of that campaign. But more so because I've tried to convey to her, and I don't know if she really understands, how hard it was to try to debate a good friend. It's certainly made for some awkward situations, but our friendship withstood that test, I believe, and for good reason and for good cause. Our relationship continues to grow. She's one of the people that I count on and turn to constantly to let me know what's going on in the community, what do people think, what else can we be doing, how else can I help? And her involvement has not decreased at all, not only just being a mother, but an active community member and a good wife and a good friend to this councilman. We look forward to her continuous involvement, and she can count on my continued support as long as she continues to do the good work that she does. And at this point, I would like to present to her this certificate as the 7th Council District Pioneer Woman of the Year, and would love for her to say a few words.
Thanks. Good morning, still. This is a pleasure and an honor to receive a reward for something that you do because you really love doing it. Let me just say that I grew up in a very small island called Nassau in the Bahamas. I was the fifth child of 10 children that this woman had. And extended family was very important to us because my mom was a single parent. So I was raised in the Bahamas by her grand-aunt, who at five years old said to me, "Your responsibility in life is to give back what you expect to receive." And so it's never been an option in my mind whether or not I was involved in the community. It's a part of my life, is what we do. My philosophy for life is very simple. It's based on a spiritual principle that your life reflects the amount of service you give. And so I will never get tired of giving of myself to the ability that I can. However, in order to do that, you have to have a very supportive family and circle of friends. I have a husband of 15 years, Stan Perkins, who is a captain with L.A. County Fire Department, and two of the smartest and brightest children you would ever want to meet, Kelsey and Cody. I also have about five other moms. One is here today, and that's Isil Davis, who worked every day in my campaign office and who came in before I did and made sure I stayed the full time and made sure that I was always present at whatever was going on in the community because Isil was just someone who was just very supportive of me, as with a lot of other women in the community. B.J. Hinton, who has been not only my administrative assistant in my own business, but who now works for me at Los Angeles Valley College and is a great sister friend. I have a lot of sisters and brothers, I have 10 of them, but I've acquired one more in I have a lot of sisters and brothers, I have 10 of them, but I've acquired one more in BJ Hinton. Gail T. Davis, who is a woman who has come into my life as a spiritual partner. We actually met as prayer partners, and we remain sister friends today. And I'm so happy that I can share this moment with them. Thank you very much. Alex, we will continue to work together as hard as it is sometimes. We will stay friends. We will stay on the same side, because the side that we're on is the side for the community. Thank you for all that you've done and you will continue to do.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Congratulations.
Mr. Ridley Thomas, can you wait just a second?
Sure.
We have two, three, four, five. Any specials by council members? If not, prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
When those are approved, then we have Item 7, as it will be to continue until the 14th of April. There's no objection, that will be the order. Anybody want to be heard on six or eight? Seeing the Public Carriage Clause, any specials, six, eight, or nine? If not, prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
Those are approved.
Item nine, fourth with, please.
Yes, ma'am. Fourth with on nine. Mr. Ridley Thomas, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but facts are facts are facts.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. The person who we honor today, Joyce Dorsey Cockrell, is unable to be present, and so before sharing with you background about her and our reasons for honoring her as a pioneer woman, please take a look at the following videotaped interview at the request of the Commission on the Status of Women.
Meet Joyce Cockrell. She's truly one of a kind. Joyce is a vibrant, talented, beautiful, and very confident person. And did I mention she's 103 years old?
I like to keep busy, and I bring this, you know, devil workshop, and I don't want to be in with the devil at all.
Joyce says she's seen it all. Born in 1897, just 30 years after slavery, her connection to American history is powerful and stronger than most.
We came from Abraham Lincoln, directly and indirectly from back to San Diego. We had offspring, but all of my parents, some of them were in slavery. My grandfather, being a medicine man, he just figured that I was going to have to have education. And the man Claire was married to a guy that was other than negro. So we went to Minneapolis, Minnesota. And when I went to Minneapolis, Minnesota, why, that's where I came in contact with all other races, and they didn't know what I was, and that's where I was able to do what I wanted to do.
Joyce became an accomplished pianist.
Played concerts. Anybody come to town, I played their music like they see. And then when I traveled to Minneapolis, I played the piano there. I played the organ and everything. I played all over the world.
She is an accomplished seamstress, working at one time for Hollywood starlets.
Most of them didn't have any money, but to keep me busy, I would have them come in in design clothes. Some of them gave me maybe a couple of dollars. Some of them didn't have it, but I didn't want any. So that made them have clothes, and it made me experience.
That experience and zest for life opened new worlds for Joyce, the mother of two, who says she apparently passed on those qualities to one of her grandchildren, Ananda Lewis of MTV.
Ananda is more like me than anybody else.
And her words of wisdom for a long and fruitful life.
You have to have a good education to be successful with anything, but I think you had to, well, I'll say specialization. That means some particular phase of your life that you think you do better than other and can be successful and make more money. That's the thing that you should have.
That's Joyce Dorsey Cockrell, Mr. President, members of the council, and without question, she is one incredible individual and a treasurer in the Eighth Council District, living in the Village Greens complex. At 103 years young, she puts many of us who are in our prime to shame. Few of the years during her century-long lifetime have been spent away from a piano bench. Her love, talent, and enthusiasm for music is strong, as strong today as ever. She'll gladly give an impromptu performance for anyone wishing to hear her play. And believe me, she plays a mean ragtime on the electric piano. Her life has been filled with experiences and accomplishments unusual for a woman born at the turn of the century. She has traveled the world, as she indicated, performed with accomplished musicians such as Lester Young, Billy Eckstein, Ben Webster, and many others, and mastered a number of vocations, including teaching and professional sewing. Few people, if any, escape her charisma, including KCT's Hugh Howser. And you just saw a bit of that fine work, who recently devoted an entire program to honor her on Channel 28. Ms. Cockrell is an inspiration to us all, and we salute her today for her notable talents, her commitment to teaching, and most of all, her indomitable spirit. And to receive on her behalf, we now invite Veronica Hendricks to express appreciation on behalf of Ms. Cockrell. Veronica?
Thank you. I just want to say Joyce couldn't be with us today. She's 103, but we wish her well, and we'd just like to thank you, council member, for giving her this honor. She certainly appreciates it, and she's certainly worthy. Thank you.
Indeed. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ridley Thomas. Mr. Wax?
The day is long, but I actually look forward to this day each year as much as any other day here, because I'm always inspired by the people that come forward as our pioneer women and what they represent in this city. And it's been so evident to me, as I've gone across this city, how most people really care about their city and want to make it better, and they want to participate in their community, and they want to give of themselves. And the women that we've honored today, and certainly the pioneer woman from the Second District, Gail Lipner, that I present to you today, embody that spirit of community, that spirit of civic involvement, that spirit of really making Los Angeles better from the community up. One of the first projects that our office came in contact with Gail was planting 98 trees along the Woodman Corridor. But that tree planting was a bigger project than most think because of a lack of irrigation, because of the way that she involved the community, young people, older people, businesses. Each tree was named after a person. There's my deputy Candy Campbell, and there's a Candace tree there on the block. But those trees weren't just planted, they've been maintained. And in the process of doing so, they reflect an entire community that participated in planting and maintaining those trees. And now, if you go down Van Nuys Boulevard near the old GM plant that's been revitalized, you'll see an incredible mural there under the undercrossing that Gail also put together, an extraordinary mural that reflects the history of the GM plant and the automotive industry and the role it played. And as that one has finished, you go down Woodman, and there's now another fantastic mural coming up. And you ask yourself how a person of her age could do so many things, when in addition to that, for 20 years, she has been involved with Pet Rescue Program in Sun Valley, and we have talked about the importance of the humane treatment of our animals in our community. And here is a person that has probably walked every one of those animals at Pet Rescue. And then if that wasn't enough, on Tuesday, she delivers meals to the elderly, meals to the homebound. And on Friday, she goes over to New Horizons and bakes cookies with mentally challenged people. And it's one project after another, working with the tree people, working with habitat, with humanity, almost as a full-time volunteer, first while she was working and now since she has retired. She has embodied everything that is good and everything that we want in our city. Our challenge is to bring out the best in people, give them a chance to participate, give them a chance to grow. And the people like Gail Lipner and the other women that we have honored today, together show you what can really be done if we give people that chance and if we nurture it and if we show in the smallest way our appreciation. I know that when I give you this certificate of commendation, just like all the other women here, it's not the certificate that you work for, but it is our way of saying thank you and recognizing how important it is to the community and the city. So I am just delighted to be able to present this to you today, Gail, and my staff is there also joining me in this, and I hope you'll say a few words to the council.
Thank you. Gosh, this is really an exciting day. I wasn't prepared for this. I'm really excited to be here and to be in the city council office and see all the council members. And I just want to thank you. There's so many things that need to be done in the community, and I'm just one person. There's a lot of people out there doing the hard grungy work, digging holes, cleaning graffiti, picking up trash, things like that. And I'm really glad that I've had Candace Campbell in Councilman Wax's office to help me. Every time I've called her, she's always tried to assist me and take care of these problems we have out there, and I'm really nervous. But I just want to thank you again, and it's just really exciting to be here and to receive this commendation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wax, thank you. Ms. Walters?
Where do you want to do it?
Ms. Walters, I think you got applause just for being.
I want to say to my honoree this morning that she is last because of my name, but certainly not least. Her name, Sandra Bryant, would take her to the top of the class. I am just delighted today to present Sandra Bryant as our selection for Pioneer Woman because of her tireless efforts in CD9 on behalf of all of the people in CD9. Sandra Bryant is the Executive Director of All Peoples Christian Center, a position she has held for the past 16 years. And that center is an outstanding, very active CD9 institution. Her first experience with that nonprofit organization was as a two-year-old in their daycare facility. She continued to participate in the agency's program throughout her childhood and adolescence. Sandra attended California State Polytechnic Institute in Pomona, where she received her Bachelor of Science degree in the area of social work. She attained her Master's Degree in Social Work Administration and Planning from the University of Tennessee at Knoxville. She is a licensed clinical social worker in the state of California. Under Sandra's leadership, All Peoples Christian Center became a member organization of the United Way of Greater Los Angeles in 1984. She is an active volunteer involved in United Way of Greater Los Angeles, where she has served in the following capacities: Chairperson, Corporate Council of Executives, 1994 to 1997; Member, Executive Committee, United Way of Greater Los Angeles; Board of Directors, 94 to 97. Sandra Bryant was recognized as 91-92 Outstanding United Way Metropolitan Region Board Member. United Way selected All Peoples in 1998 as the Community Impact Charity of the Year. In 1994, she received the Labor Community Services Honorary Award, presented by the Community Services Department of the Los Angeles County Federation of Labor, AFL-CIO. Mrs. Bryant serves on the Board of Directors of the Asian-American-
Please have a quiet on this side of the room.
Mrs. Bryant serves on the Board of Directors of the Asian-American Drug Abuse Program of Los Angeles. A couple of years ago, she was selected as the Eureka Foundation Fellow. The Eureka Foundation Council members provides mini sabbaticals for directors of community-based agencies, serving children, youth, and families. She is also chairperson for the San Pedro Street Elementary School Healthy Start Collaborative. Sandra's agency is the lead for LA in the following capacities. Sorry, she is the lead for LA Bridges, targeting middle-school-aged youth and their families at John Adams Middle School. Sandra is also a graduate of both schools. She was selected as one of 10 delegates representing Los Angeles at the Presidential Summit on Volunteers in Philadelphia. She serves on the LA Promise Steering Committee. Sandra serves as a member of the SPA 6 Council of Los Angeles County Children's Planning Council. She is a member of the Steering Committee of the Jefferson High School Resource Coordinating Council. In 1987, Sandra became the first female member of the Los Angeles Host Lions Club, chartered in 1914, and in 1992 was installed as its first female president. She represented her club at the International Convention in Hong Kong in that same year. She serves as the Student Speakers Contest Chairperson. In 1999, Sandra received the Melvin Jones Fellows Award from her club, one of the highest honors in lionism. Sandra Bryant was one of 10 individuals named 1999 Lewis Hine Award recipient by the National Guild Labor Committee. She received the 1999 California Association of Human Relations Organization Civil Rights Leadership Award. And she's also been a lifelong and active member of the Christian Church, the disciples of Christ, and she is married and has, to Leo Bryant. Where's Leo? Okay, all right, very good, very good. And I believe you have one son and one granddaughter.
Yes.
Are they here as well?
No, they're not here.
Okay, all right. Well, it gives me a great deal of pleasure to present this certificate of commendation to you for all the work that you do. And council members, let me say, this is a woman who works in a very quiet, very effective way. She's not out there banging drums and self-promotion. That's not what Sandra is about. But she's such an effective voice in the community, and she has just such a gentle spirit about her and is always willing, no matter how much she has on her plate, to take on one more job for people in CD9. And I'm just very proud of her and very impressed with all your abilities. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Walters, and to the city council and also to the commission. This is indeed a great honor, and I'm told that the last shall be first. So I have something to look forward to in the future. I realize that it's late, but I do want to acknowledge some individuals who are so much a part of my life. First, my husband, Leo Bryant, who she mentioned, who is my strength and support. However, I need to say to you, the person who's responsible for me being here today, who came all the way from Las Vegas, my mother, Mary Reynolds, who worked for All Peoples Christian Center for 22 years before she retired. And so hopefully, we will be able to continue to carry on the legacy. And most important, people that I feel that make me look good, what I call my extended family, who have spent the last four hours waiting. These are some of the members of the staff and my pastor from All Peoples Christian Church. So- I've spent my entire life in CD9 and in All Peoples Christian Center, which started in the 1940s. And it was predominantly a Japanese, American, Japanese-American community, and then it became predominantly an African-American community, and now it's a predominantly Latino community. I think what we do in that community and that center is a testimony to, you can make a difference. You can value the diversity of a community and still continue to meet the needs of the children, adults, and families. It is an honor to receive this kind of award, but if it wasn't for the individuals behind me, I would not be standing here today. Again, I would like to thank you very much for the recognition of all the women for what we do to represent so many other women in the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your exceptional service to the city. Great. Okay, we have concluded our Pioneer Women of the Year presentations. We've concluded today's council agenda. We have one individual who wishes to be heard on public comment. I believe his name is Manuel Valle. Please proceed.
Yeah, good evening, good afternoon, City Council. My name is Manuel Valle. I live in Santa Barbara. I'm a, I'm here because of the Rampart scandal. I'm a victim. I'm a father. My son's in prison because of Rafael Perez. He wasn't the arresting officer, but he was the officer that took the witness from the handcuffs and put her in his, in her car. Anything I'm saying is public. It's not, nothing's, you know, her name is Sonia Flores. He took her for three hours in her car. I got a letter from the DA's office, a Julian Walker, who works for Garcetti, about a year ago, saying what, what was going on with Perez, and that I could file an appeal, which I did. And I didn't know the procedure, didn't have any money, and, and they said, "You can't do it without getting an attorney." Well, how can I get an attorney if I don't have any money? So one thing led to another, and I was able to retain an attorney. And from that attorney, we, we met a roadblock. And, and then we, I kept moving on and on and on. Finally, there was an appeal put together, and it was submitted. About a month ago, it was turned down by, by Judge Fittler or something. He was on TV yesterday. I, I, and, and the reason why he turned it down was a code called Section 115, which means that there was not, there wasn't any evidence that's saying that there was, that the witness lacked credibility. I was hoping that the District Attorney's Office would, would interview Perez, would interview the witness, but that was not done. If that was done, I think my son would be out today. I'm going to, I, I only put one copy together. Excuse me for my, my emotion. But, and I'm going to give it to Hernandez, and if anybody else wants a copy, if you would make a copy. I'm the milkman in Carpinteria. I, I worked hard this morning to get down here, try not to break no speeding laws. I illegally parked. Hope I don't have a ticket, but I probably do. So that I could get here on time. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Valle. There are no other members of the public who wish to be heard? We have motions for posting and referral?
That's correct, Mr. President.
All right, without objection, they will be posted and referred. Next item?
Councilmember's request for mixed use from council attendance. Councilmember Ridley, Councilmember Padilla requests to be excused on April 4th for personal businesses meets policy.
Without objection.
Councilmember Pacheco requests to be excused on April 7th to leave at 11:00 a.m. This is for city business meets policy.
Without objection.
Councilmember Chick requests to be excused on April 7th. A motion is required.
All right, Mr. Ridley Thomas moves. Mr. Padilla seconds. That'll be the order. Next item?
Councilmember Farrar wishes to be excused on April 25th for personal businesses meets policy.
Okay, without objection.
The desk is clear.
Very well. Do we have any adjourning motions? All right, could the council please rise? Mr. Holden?
Mr. President, members, sad to announce that Miss Bessie Watson Black passed away. She was the aunt of Ambassador to Micronesia, former and ambassador today Senator Diane Watson. She moved to Los Angeles from Kansas City in 1932 with her husband, Harry. She joined the U.S. Postal Service in 1943, and unfortunately, lost her husband early on in 1956. She retired from the Postal Service in 1974, continued to be active as a member of the Women's Auxiliary of the Knights of St. Peter's. She was also an active parishioner of St. Agathus Church, where she attended Mass until the last 60 days of her life. She was 90 years old, young, when she passed away. The services will be held tomorrow, April 1st, 2000. Her only son, Richard A. Black, his wife, Constance, and their children, numerous nieces and nephews, survives.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Ms. Zakowski?
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Mr. Brinson, I would like to co-present a tribute in memory of John Fielding, who died Tuesday at 90 years of age. And John Fielding is the father of Frank Fielding, I think we all know in the planning department.
Thank you, Ms. Zakowski. Mr. Padilla?
Thank you, Mr. President.
All members on this?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do request that the council adjourn in memory of Mally Lee Simmons Cusman, who passed away on March 12th of this year. At an early age, she professed her faith in Christ, and in later years, she attended Hamilton United Methodist Church. She moved to Pacoima, she and her husband, Ed Cusman, who is very well-known in the community, and they became affiliated with the First United Methodist Church. Mally and Ed went into the housing business and constructed houses in South Los Angeles, Pacoima, Lancaster, and Valverde. They were also involved in the facility planning and building of the Northeast Valley Health Corporation and the First Methodist Church of Pacoima. Mrs. Cusman served as Field Deputy for Assemblymember Jim Kaiser. And on several occasions, Mally traveled to Europe with the late mayor, Tom Bradley. She was also a 50-year member of the NAACP, and she survived by her devoted husband of 57 years, Ed Cusman, one daughter, Linda Mimi Cusman Watson, one son-in-law, one stepdaughter, and three grandchildren.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Ms. Ridley Thomas? Mr. Wax? All members on this?
It's just an irony that just a few moments ago, Ms. Walters and I were talking about the Cusmans, without knowing that this, and the tremendous contribution that the whole family has made over the years.
Thank you, Mr. Wax. Ms. Walters?
Yes, I'd like to be a seconder on the one of Ms. Blake, I believe was the name for Diane Watson's aunt. And certainly also, I believe you said, all members for the Cusman, Mrs. Cusman. She was certainly, Ed Cusman was like Mr. Civil Rights of the Valley, but he made it regularly into town. And I know at the school board, he was a frequent spokesperson for school desegregation, for equal educational opportunity, and his wife was always there to support him. She was very supportive of him. And NAACP conventions, Ed was all over the place, but his wife was right there assisting him in continuing his work. And so I'm really very sorry to hear that she has passed away.
Thank you, Ms. Walters. Call the roll. The council's adjourned.